First on our agenda is our monthly reports. Our department's never represented online. Fires, structural zero. Wildland brush two, nuisance three, cooking zero, activity of alarms two. Emergencies, medical thirty-eight, vehicle collision, pedestrian zero, crash collision three. Mountain rescues zero, ocean rescue is one, has to be as material incidents zero. And that is the extent of my fire knowledge, so. I will welcome that. Moving on to. HPD, we have a representative online. Okay, seeing that for HPD, again, if you come back online here, I would welcome their reports. Moving on to board business or sorry, filling of vacancies on the board. We have one vacancy in sub-district five and one in sub-district six. Is there anyone from the internet room or online that would like to fill the vacancy? Okay, nice to hear, Matt, right there. Is this relevant to the agenda items that we just went through?
I'm having trouble with the volume, can barely hear you.
Okay, how about now? Maybe I wasn't talking.
Oh, much better.
That better? Okay, sorry about that.
Big difference, thank you.
Okay, was that it?
Yep, that was it, I'm sorry.
No problem. Moving on to city, state, and federal reports. First up, we have Mayor Rick Blandiardi's representative, Jiro Sumada. Are you online with us, Jiro? Okay, not seeing mayor or mayor's rep. We will move on, but if they show up, we will welcome their report. Councilmember Esther Kiana. Esther, are you with us or someone from Esther's office?
Yes, I'm here. Okay, hold on.
Hi, Esther.
Wow, this is going really fast. It's only at seven oh two PM. I really don't have much of a report. As many of you know, we, there are a lot of things going on, but I like to be time efficient because I know you're all busy. I do wanna just mahalo the board and the community for being so engaged in invasive species. I know you guys had your little fire ant workshop. We had a a larger Windward Town Hall in Waimea Manalo. And many of you attended, and of course, we're following up with, I'll let Senator Kioho Kalole and his office update you on something we're having in Kani'oe regarding to little fire ants, and Lisa Martin will follow up with one in Kailua. Suffice it to say that I believe that clearly the funding for the Department of Land and Natural Resources and Department of Agriculture is woefully inadequate. And I have pledged that during this upcoming legislative session that I will personally go there to help in lobbying for at least a doubling of the funding that they currently receive. I was disheartened at Waimea Manalo's Town Hall that they have conceded that the coconut rhinoceros beetle is no longer about an eradication strategy, but a matter of containment on Oahu. That really upsets me because there was an opportunity for them because they already knew where it was to tackle it, so I'm I'm very disappointed in that. And just lastly, you know, you may know I've been working on a dog park by Bayview Golf Course. It will be the only city dog park on the Windward side. It's pretty much finished for all of you who love dogs and would like to take your dogs there. I'm hoping for completion in the next couple of months. I'm working on a road. An easement access for people to traverse the golf course to get to the dog park. And second, I'm working with Bayview to realign the dog, one of the holes so that errant balls will not go into the park. And I wanted to thank the Minami Foundation, which I know John Rapun is is a member of, and he has helped the Windward Dog Park Hui. And that's pretty much it for my presentation. I did note that last month, there was a discussion on whether or not the dismantling of Haiku stairs will be moving to Ko'oloa Ranch. I know that that has been something that has been discussed by Ko'oloa Ranch, but that has nothing to do with the city's strategy. And I'm gonna leave it to Jiro to update you guys on the contract, which was awarded. But for anyone who is interested in that topic, I recommend that you contact Ko'oloa Ranch directly. And that's my report.
Mahalo, Esther. Are there any questions from community in the room for councilmember Kiana? Any questions online for councilmember Kiana? Thanks for being with us, Esther.
Thank you.
I am gonna revisit Agenda Item number two because it looks like HFD signed on. HFD, hi, thank you so much. Do you have a report for us?
Sorry about that there.
No problem.
The link didn't work, so I have to manually enter everything.
No problem.
Statistics for August is we have one, two brush fires, two activated alarms, no fire, thirty-eight medicals, three motor vehicle crash collisions, and one ocean rescue. The fire safety tip of the month is evacuation planning. In the event of an emergency, be prepared with an evacuation plan. Create your plan with all members of your family and household. Keep in mind those with limited abilities, children, elderly, and pets. Identify possible exits and escape routes. Predetermine a safe meeting place. Always choose the escape route that is safest. Think about various scenarios and strategies. How to use them, review, and practice the plan often. Assemble an emergency supply kit. Remember to pack important documents, medicines, and necessary pet items. Remember to stay calm, stay informed, and stay alert. For more information, visit fire.honolulu.gov. Is there any concerns or question?
All right, hi, yes. I have a question. Where did it take place? The ocean rescue?
So to answer that, you can go to fire.honolulu.gov. That's go to media, and you can look for the ocean rescue and see exactly where the thing is. Because sometimes it's not even in our first area. We just have a landing zone sometimes, so that's why they put it into our stats.
Okay, Roger that. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for HFD? Seeing no hands raised in the room or online. Thank you, HFD. Okay, we're going back down to our city, state, and federal reports. Councilmember Matt Wire or someone from the office? Anyone from councilmember Wire's office with us? Seeing none, but if they come on, then we will welcome their report. Moving on to Board of Water Supply, Barry Usugawa. We have you with us, Barry.
Kathy's here for something. She's here for a good book.
Okay, moving on from that. Governor Josh Green's representative, Scott Morikami, will not be with us this evening. Let me read you the the memo. This is from Scott Morikami. Governor Green's office remains focused on addressing the devastation and tragic impacts from the Lahaina wildfire. Please find the attached Governor Green's September twenty twenty-three newsletter, which I will have NCO email out to anyone who wants it. We anticipate returning to the Neighborhood Board Meeting in October. Should you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me, mahalo Scott Morikami. So that is the report that we have from Governor's office. Moving on to Senator Brenton Awah. Senator Awah, are you online? Okay, I'm gonna pass it to his office manager. Oh, he's on his way, so we will circle back to Senator Awah. Moving on to Representative Lisa Kitagawa. Lisa, do we have you or Jen with us online? Hey, Jen.
Hey, just a quick update. Oh, first of all, Rep sends her apologies that she's not able to make it. She's at a legislative conference right now, so I'm just filling in for her. Just a couple of things. We have a couple of town halls coming up. So in Kani'oe, on the twentieth, so a week from now, at Ben Parker, we'll be having our Little Fire Ant Town Hall. I know a lot of people are concerned about that issue, and so our legislators are actively trying to tackle it. And there will be a lot of people from the departments there to answer questions and just give a better idea of what the game plan is for that issue. So that'll be from six to eight PM. And then the week after that, it's not technically within like Kahalauu Kani'oe, but we're gonna be having Ka'ava Ha'ula Town Hall with the Department of Transportation to address coastal erosion. And I know that that's kind of on a lot of people's minds, so even if you don't live in that district, feel free to come. It's gonna be at Swansea Beach Park from five thirty to seven thirty. And I guess I'll just mention to Senator Awah, it will be participating in both events as well, so thank you to his office as well for helping us put those together. I think that's about it, but if anyone has questions, feel free to let me know.
Mahalo, Jen. Community, anything for Jen? Anybody online have anything for Jen for Rep Kitagawa's office? Joe, can you go to the mic, please?
Aloha, I missed the date for the coastal erosion at Swansea.
You know, that could have totally been me not even saying it, so I apologize if I didn't. It's on the twenty-ninth. So twenty-ninth Swansea Beach Park at five thirty.
Okay, mahalo, Jen. Thank you so much. Okey dokey. Senator Awah, thank you for joining us. It's your turn. Thank you.
So joke aside, I was told that Rep Kitagawa covered most of what we were gonna cover. Was there anything else that was left out that we need to? If you don't cover that. Okay, so we, several months ago, went out to Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Did a presentation about their R2, their potential R2 water use that would save eleven point one million gallons of water per month if they were able to use it on their golf courses. At the time, they had told us they're thirty-fifth in line to be reviewed by the Department of Health. So we ended up getting in touch with the Department of Health and finding out what was going on. The Department of Health basically said that they cannot be approved as their system stands because they need to add a contact chamber, basically a little more to to treat the water before it's sprayed along the golf courses. So what we wanna do, we just wanna get to them to be able to save that water. So we're gonna have another conversation, what, tomorrow? Tomorrow with the Marine Corps Base Hawaii about this issue. On a later note, we've been doing a lot of stuff. One thing that's coming up, plant food trees. We got a bill for that. It got shut down, but we're just gonna, we're doing it anyway. And we have community support. The Department of Transportation's gonna allow us to plant ulu along Kahakili between Aha'olalo to Ahuimalu Road. So there's a, there's a, roughly a thirty-foot wide area on a slope that runs point four miles, so a little less than a half a mile, right above the canal over there. We're gonna take all that down with a mulcher. We're gonna lay the black tarp over it, let the thing sit for a bit, and then we're gonna go in and plant ulu. The details of that has still been worked out, but if anybody wants to join, let our office know, but we'll be putting out the information about that. We're also working with the city, and this is more preliminary. We've got a verbal agreement, but we need to get a memorandum of agreement signed before, losing my coordination here. Right down over here by Keahia Kohoi, the five acres of preservation land right on the shoreline. During Mayor Harris's time, they cleared it. The city, we're gonna work at the city, we're gonna work with Keahia Kohoi and the key project to go clear that again and then replant native trees.
Is this on? You hear me? Yeah. So actually, on Ma'kai's side, where Keahia Kohoi is, it's about four or five acres. But you're talking about beyond that?
No, that, that land right between the art gallery and Keahia Kohoi.
So that's, that's, that's an additional.
That's about five acres.
Actually, it's additional, ten acres.
That's ten?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. When you check the property tax map, it said five, but a little less than five.
Yeah, it's, I know it's like fourteen acres is the whole thing, but anyway, that's all part of Kahanga Regional Park technically, so yeah, I'm totally in favor of that idea.
Okay, yeah, good. Thanks for that. And then lastly, I forget the date because, you know, every day's been just one day at a time, but what was it, a month ago, a couple months ago? The boat problem was there. We wanna do a little presentation to Rick Powell for his work. Going where government couldn't go, government was taking, telling us it was gonna take eight months. Was that the estimate to get rid of that boat? And, but you did it within a week after our board meeting, so you know. One day, one day after. So that's, that's on the record. If everybody, you know, just give a round of applause to him because that's the kind of stuff we wanna see. Mahalo. Gotta give credit to Nai Pecanso also because he's the one that haul the way all the rubbish. That's all I have. I'm just gonna pass this over.
Mahalo, Senator Awah. Uncle Dan, you have a question for Senator Awah? Uncle Dan, can you go to the microphone just so that we have it recorded properly?
Regular presentation of the amount of effluent that's going into the bay so that we have an idea of the volume of the leakage from their wastewater treatment. So when you go to talk to the marine folks, they are required, I think by law, to publicize when there's an effluent spill into the bay, but they don't always tell us the quantity. So we have no idea or no way to measure the multitude, the size of what's going in there with, in comparison to all of the cesspools that need to be replaced. Remember, I sent your office a plan for a cesspool, you know, reimbursement for people who fix them and connect up, whatever. So the problem is that we're asking people with cesspools, but maybe they're not big, we don't know, right? So if you could just politely ask them, would you please let us know what quantity is of the effluent when you have a spill? Yeah.
Mahalo, Uncle Dan. Are there any other questions or comments for Senator Awah online? Seeing no hands raised. I'm gonna circle back to councilmember Matt Wire's office. I see we have Leitani online. Hi, Leitani, can you give us your report?
Hi, aloha. My apologies for coming in late. Was having some technical difficulties. Aloha, Leitani Poulche, on behalf of councilmember Matt Wire. Councilmember, I'll start with a few legislative updates on our end. Councilmember Wire chairs the Committee on Housing Sustainability and Health, and this afternoon, the committee considered and then voted to support the nomination of Frederick Rapun to the Clean Water and Natural Lands Advisory Commission. This seven-member commission considers and makes recommendations on projects that seeks to use monies from the Clean Water and Natural Lands Fund. This fund was established in two thousand and seven for the purpose of acquiring land for conservation purposes, including protection of watershedlands, preservation of forests, beaches, coastal areas, ag lands, supporting public outdoor recreation, education, preservation of historic culturally important lands, protecting significant habitats, reducing erosion, floods, landslides, runoff, and increasing public access. So it's a very important commission. It's a good use of monies. We appreciate Mr. Rapun's willingness to lend his expertise to this commission, and the matter will come before the full council for final approval, presumably at the next meeting scheduled for October fourth. I'll also note that in the committee today, we, councilmember Wire introduced the bill previously, Bill forty-seven relating to recycling, and it passed out of committee today. This bill would require the city to include as part of its curbside recycling program, collection of manufactured materials that are specifically made to break down in the compost system at the end of its useful life, so like bags, food packaging, cups, plates, stuff like that. The Department of Environmental Services expressed their support for this effort and noted that it goes hand in hand with their upcoming mandate to collect food waste. So we look forward with, to working with them to further refine this bill as it moves forward. A few community updates. Last month, there was a question about the status of the city's efforts to find a site for an ambulance facility somewhere around Waikana area. As it was noted last month, the city did transfer that Waikana parcel from Parks Inventory into Department of Emergency Services. Emergency Services is still working on this and trying to figure out an appropriate place to site an ambulance facility. You know, they've been in contact with the folks at Coral Kingdom, but they're still looking at their options. However, Dr. Ireland, Director of DES Emergency Services, has expressed his continued support for facilitating community efforts to Malama, the Waikana parcel, regardless of where the ambulance facility gets sited. Our office has also fielded a few calls regarding the striping of Kamamea Highway from the Hygienic Store to about the pier. In July, the mayor's rep shared that DFM had scheduled work for July or August. And to my knowledge, they haven't started yet, so I don't know if the mayor's rep is there in person and has any information on that, or if he'd be able to ping DFM on this, you know, and our end will continue to follow up with the department to see what their current timeline is. With that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments back to councilmember.
Mahalo, Leitani. Any board members in the room have questions for Leitani? Uncle Ken, go ahead.
Yes, I have a constituent this week, and I was gonna do it for the mayor, but the mayor's rep's not here. And Leitani's such a good guy, does such a good job. I think if I could read this for him, it's two paragraphs. It's about, I think, three issues. And these are like a couple of years old. Nothing has still been done, although repeated requests, and I just mentioned one of them last month. Anyway, it says, "Never heard anything from anyone, not even our city councilman." What a hazard. Glad you saw the piece on the news. Another subject I brought up to no avail is there's some street signs or sopilao, you can't read them. I test cleaned a sign, and it can be cleaned with a little bit of elbow grease. And then he's upset about the Hawaiian Telecom Concrete Fortress at the end of Lulani. All the moss and algae on the building. Finally abandoned house on Okana-Lulani Corner had a fire last Monday, was declared an estimated loss of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, didn't even have a roof and falling in on itself. My estimate was it's not worth a thousand dollars. And then he gets snide and says, "I smell an insurance scam here." One more thing, on my morning walks and driving around Kani'oe, I've noticed an alarming number of cars with expired safety stickers, some dating back to twenty nineteen. And I suspect registration stickers too, but those are too small to read. He's a little older than I am. On the surface, safety inspections seem minor, but if cars are going uninspected, that means bald tires, non-working headlights, windshield wipers, brakes, et cetera. We're looking at dangerous killer vehicles on the road. I asked a cool eye and it confirmed that COVID moratorium is long over. Police are too busy with serious crime, but these potentially killer cars are no joke either. And then he says, "Got a mouthful, didn't you?" As he teased me. But my real big concern actually is the rotted guardrail. The rotted guardrail on Kamamea Highway between Miamia Loop and Lulani. Okay, you can, you can't miss it. It's about thirty-foot section. The whole section needs to be replaced. If you could help us out with that, I'd really appreciate. He's been waiting years. We had another one further up at the bottom of Lulani, which we did get fixed. We mentioned this one I'm talking about now, and it never did get fixed. It never got addressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Uncle Ken.
Yeah, thanks for that. I can, so I did put in a request. I didn't hear anything back regarding the guardrail. I think it was brought up at last month's meeting. I think I noted that it was near the pier though, but you say it's Miamia Loop and Lulani?
And Lulani is at the bottom.
Thank you. Any other board members online have anything for Leitani? Community members in the room? Anything for Leitani? Community members online? Seeing no hands. I'm gonna circle back again to Board of Water Supply, Barry Usugawa, who's joined us. Hi, Barry, we're ready for you when you are.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am chair. I'll just for being there. Just a few things to announce tonight. One main break to report on August twenty-first. On Wahe'i Road was a twelve-inch main. The general announcement for the month is on Source Protection Week. The Board of Water Supplies will observe Source Protection Week from September twenty-fourth to September thirtieth. And the goal is to bring awareness about the importance of protecting our precious drinking water sources. While Oahu's water purely comes from groundwater resources, here are some basic ways you can protect a resource. So conserving is certainly a way to protect it and use water efficiently. So check for and repair leaks regularly and use only what you need and don't waste it. Properly dispose of household waste, don't pour it on the ground. Especially like used oil when you changing oil for cars and stuff. Dispose of it properly and then protect our watershed. Stay on designated trails and respect the wildlife and join a community watershed partnership group if you can. With the closure of three water sources near Red Hill, we all need to be responsible stewards to ensure we have an adequate supply of safe drinking water for our community. And for more information, please go to boardofwatersupply.com slash source. And let's do all our, let's all do our part to make every drop count. And that's very important and happy to answer any questions.
Mahalo, Barry. Uncle Cliff, go ahead.
Yeah, Barry, you know, yeah. Well, first, when did the last time you win a punch bowl? Last month?
Punch Bowl Cemetery.
Yeah, because the question God would ask you is, "Is a greenest place on earth?"
Well, at least it is a lot of it.
No, because that or nobody, I went up there.
Yeah.
You cannot feel the grass. What you walking on is wet sponge. The water, oh, a bitch, it's every night the water. But you know, from a place like that, yeah, use water, but not every night. It just, it's look like you're wasting all money.
Yeah.
You know, but they're all slushy up there.
They're, they're one of the, they're like the second highest water user in our metro high service system next to University of Hawaii. And they're a lot smaller. So yeah, I think our communications has sent them a letter to ask them to use less. It's the federal government, right? But you know, they need to conserve like everybody else, especially summertime. So thanks for reinforcing that and let us know about that. We'll follow up.
Mahalo, Uncle Cliff. Any other board members in the room? Board members online? Any questions or comments for Barry? Community in the room? Community online? Okay, great. Thanks so much for being with us, Barry.
Appreciate it.
Moving on, thank you. Moving on to Chancellor Artist Eshenberg from Windward Community College. Artist, are you with us? Okay, if Artist comes on later, we'll circle back to her. Oh, Jiro. Oh, hi, Jiro. Come on up to the mic, Jiro. Thank you. We're going back up to Mayor's rep.
Thank you, board. I'm sorry I'm late.
No problem.
Go over my report first and I can answer questions. Jiro Sumada, Deputy Director, Department of Planning and Permitting. So just to follow up from last month's questions, there was a question about signage or no parking along Kamamea Highway between Heia State Park and Heia Pier. The GTS responded. Department of Transportation Services completed their investigation regarding the request for no parking signs along Kamamea Highway between Heia State Park and Heia. in between Heia State Park and Heia, Heia Boat Harbor, which included an updated review of the area's traffic collision history and a site inspection. The DTS updated review of the area's traffic collision history did not find any trends and their site inspection did not find any unusual conditions that necessitate the installation of no parking signs along Kamamea Highway between the park and the boat, uh, the boat harbor. In addition, DTS has requested the assistance of the Department of Design and Construction to design and install approximately three hundred twenty-five feet of guard rail along Kamamea Highway between the state park and the boat harbor. Installation of the guard rail, guard rail should deter motors from parking in the area. As such, the installation of the no parking signs is not recommended at this time. Okay, you want me to hold?
Sorry, I thought you were done. Go ahead. Okay, there's more. Go ahead.
Next one is the missing guard rail. Uh, and just the responses refer to the answer in item one. Next. Uh, e-waste disposal. Board Member Tao wants to work with the city to develop a plan that will dump, dump and recycle e-waste like car batteries in the Kahalu area. Uh, you know, I don't know if that's exactly what, what was requested, but anyway, that's what they wrote down, so I'm gonna reply. The response from Environmental Services, ENV is open to discussing an e-waste plan with the Kahalu area. Please contact Michael Gillingham, Recycling Specialist at eight zero eight seven six eight three four three three, uh, or his email. M dot Gillingham at Honolulu dot com. And then the last item was, uh, Haiku Stairs. Board Member Masterson asked about plans to remove the Haiku Stairs and alleged plans to move the stairs to Ko'oloa Ranch. What information, if any, can DDC share our community hearings or town hall meetings plan? The DDC reply was the city has executed the construction contract for the removal of the stair modules. Contractor responsible for recycling and reuse of the stair members. There are no community meetings, town hall meetings planned, and I think Councilmember Kiana called me today. Did she address this subject?
Is that there's stairs or we have to call the ranch? Yeah, she said that call Ko'oloa Ranch about that because they're the ones trying to bring the stairs over there to recycle them, to use them over there. Yeah, so anybody who had any questions about that, gotta call the ranch directly.
So I can answer any questions or board any new concerns? You want?
Okay, Uncle Rick and then Uncle Cool, I mean, uh, Uncle Art, sorry.
Hi Jiro, thank you. Um, on the greenways, I think the question that I had asked was that should we get a big storm hurricane or something like that? Where would we, where would we place the sorbitant amount of greenways that would be generated from something like that? It's good to plan for those kinds of things in advance and then we're not helter skelter when the time comes.
So I'll, I'll kind of rephrase that to the, the Environmental Services. Because actually your question applies to everybody, not just Kahalu.
Uncle Art, go ahead. Yeah.
I have a question concerning the fire extinguishing on, on Kam Highway between King's School and Heia Pier. There's twenty five hydrants. There's not much houses in that area. And from the drive into the Heia Pier, all the way past about a mile, there's no fire extinguisher. If there's a fire in that area, there's no fire extinguisher. And that's what really surprised me that for one mile, there's, there's zero uh fire extinguisher. It's from, again, from Heia Pier to pass uh Antis Owls. And I think it's a concern because what happened to Maui? Because in that area, they usually shoot the fumes. And if we have a, a fire in that area, there's no fire extinguisher. Can you check on that? Because most of the fire extinguisher, like I said, there were twenty that we counted from King's School. And it's about only about fifty yards apart. Then you come down to Heia Pier, you know, for one mile, it's zero. And I think that's really important because we don't want something to happen like it happened in Maui.
Anti-Raki, you have something?
Yeah, um, to follow up what um Art said, yeah, lots of this, I, I believe all of, but why is it there for unnecessary? Is it for future developments? You already got farms there. And today I just got to be talking, we had a meeting at Ete Lo'i, talking about the bay and all of the springs that we have in right there in Heia. So, you know, we got water. Why do you think over there is always green? Look at the rest of the island, it's the only place you don't see brown, you see green. So we, and it's not necessary for us. But another thing, I think the city should reevaluate the kuliana from Haiku Road to Hygienic Store that Kamamea Highway, the Sukai's kuliana that belongs to the city. And a lot needs to be done. We talked about the rails that needs to be fixed. Although we, you say there's no necess- it's not necessary to put no parking, but half of the time the cars are parked over the sidewalk where people can't even use the sidewalk to walk on, especially weekends. Cars with wheels are on the road in that parking with the, or commercial businesses on the pier. So you really gotta take a look at that. Another thing is, we drove here this evening, it's already dark, can't see the lines. That those lines are necessary. It needs to be refurbished back in there. On a rainy day and day, now you can't see lines. We have lots of, we have lots of corners on Kamamea Highway that belongs to the city that needs to be looked at, it needs to be fixed. Talking about Ko'oloa Ranch now, getting the stairway is fine, but don't they need an EIS to put those sta- those stairs up wherever they're gonna put it? I think it's like putting the, the horse before the cart, the cart before the horse. You know, there, all of these things need to be looked into. Then you talked about bringing up the um garbage to look for places to put the, the garbys. I think, you know, every cool, every Ain, every um moku should have their own um place to dump their rubbish. We shouldn't be dumping rubbish, take all of our rubbish from one side of the island and putting it down in a homestead naming Womanalo Dumpster, which is not even Womanalo, it's Wa'ana'i, right next to the homestead people. I think there's enough room with the city. On Honolulu, there's enough room to go look at each, we have six um moku's here, sis- six tissues. It can be, you can make six different dumps, um, um, dumps for taking the own kuliana. Each area take, take care of their own kuliana. And that had, that was done before in ancient time. Everybody took care of their own kuliana, not dumping everybody's rubbish into somebody else's yard. And I think that's something we really gotta be looking for. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Anti-Raki. Uncle John?
Um, Jiro, if I could um go back to the guardrails. You were talking about between Heia Kea Pier and Heia State Park, right? Um, but by Brenton's House, as you approach Brenton's House, there's a gap. I don't know what the address is there. But there, you come out of Heia Kea and there's a spot there where if you blink, you're gonna go over and you're not gonna land on his roof, but somebody right next, you land in the water. It's really steep. Yeah. So while you, while you're looking for that, that's really important. And then I wanna go back and reemphasize what Rocky was saying about uh the no parking signs, the no parking. You're talking about the Makai side of the highway that DTS looked at?
I don't know exactly which side they look at. I thought it was both sides they needed no parking.
Okay, yes.
Saying earlier, both sides on the weekends, when everybody goes to visit the sandbar, you got cars like this, like they're at, they're, like they're going to a concert. But like these people don't pay attention to where they're parking. They just wanna make it to the boat on time before their friends go back home. It's getting pretty crazy, like, like tires out on the road. Like I drive through there with my family on the weekends, you know, with my children and stuff like that. And you get people just like stumbling out into the road, not paying attention. And then when you tell them, hey, what's going on? They start cussing you out, they view the problem. It's like, you know, like that's the issue that they're all bringing up. And that's why Anti-Raki requested the no parking signs. But what you're saying is they're gonna put a guard rail instead of no parking signs, so they just can't even park there, right?
But the question is, where?
It goes farther, it goes farther. It goes that whole strip from, it goes from the entrance or like even before the entrance of Heia State Park. And it goes all the way to the end of the, the straightaway, almost close to Anti-Raki's place. It's like the cars are just parked in lines and they're over the line.
Maybe I can find out exactly where they're talking about.
Yeah, because it's pretty long. So it's a pretty long, like we're all talking about the same thing, just different.
I think, I think what Brenton's suggesting is a good idea because um you have Heia Kea Pier is state. And the Makai side strip along Heia Kea, I believe is state. And the Mauna Kea side is, is county. So this is where state and county need to come together. Both DOT, actually harbors, yes, you need a joint meeting to kind of walk through the whole area. As you're coming out of uh Heia Uli, if you're coming across the long bridge on the Mauna Kea side of the highway where the walkway is, um, the slope is constantly eroding down over the walkway. So people can't walk on the sidewalk. Um, and that, that should be addressed. There's a way to fix that. And um, you know, I would suggest that with the heavy use of the film industry in the area, make this one of their givebacks that gets on their tax write-off. That's the kind of thing that they should be doing. It's very doable. The last thing I wanna add to, to this is that um, you know, with the, with the introduction of Guinea grass brick, I'm right above Guinea grass, right? Brick. That's, that's what we're talking about. That's what's in Lahaina. That's what is growing alongside the road. So it grows really, really fast. Um, DOT is dealing with it um pretty effectively along the highways. They haven't articulated more, you know, the side, the side more of a tractor. Um, I think they keep that part at the base yard near King Intermediate. But the city needs something for access to that or an agreement with the state. Last time I reported, they, they have one on order and so they, it's scheduled to come in. So instead of ordering it, just get a cooperative, cooperative agreement with the state, because the state has one on island. And they're working right next door to each other by King Intermediate. Let the state come and mow that section, because that's what's growing up, as you're growing, as you're coming along Kamamea Highway. Um, it's the grass growing out on the Mauna Kea side of the highway as you head towards Heia Kea that forces people to veer off into the other lane, which is the mark. Yeah. I got one more.
Here, wait, let me go to, um, I'm gonna go to Ian first and then we can come back. Ian, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I mean, great subjects tonight, and I want to uh support my fellow board members in their discussion on the Makai Road. Uh, especially around Heia Uli and Heia Kea, very dangerous areas. And, and it's very important to deal with those issues that drive it once or twice a day both ways. And so we do see a lot of dangerous situations with pedestrians going to the pier and otherwise also those parked along the road. So thank you for dealing with that. Um, just, you had mentioned the uh, the Heia stairs and uh I do appreciate that. I do kind of, it, it brings up broader issues if we want to start, if the city is endorsing uh stairways to have in on Sacred Mauna all over our islands and, you know, as far as recycling the stairs goes, what's, I agree with Anti-Raki, not only about the uh, the uh mitigations that should given, be in place, but also recognizing that those Ka'ava cliffs are a major water source and, and what are we doing, putting tourist sites going up to Sacred Mauna and those sacred cliffs? So um, just wanna make sure all that gets covered and that we want to get the understanding of what the sitting counties perspective is on doing this, rather than just going to call Ko'oloa Ranch, because that's quite ineffective many times. So thank you about that. Um, you know. Yeah, it's a big issue everywhere. And so this recycling of the stairs is not just a simple issue. And please recognize that it's going to endorse other stairways on other mountains on our island and other places. So thank you for that.
Mahalo, Ian. Okay, so board members, I just wanna remind you, um, for emphasis, it's great, but if a board member has already touched on a topic, please go on to a different question, um, for time's sake. I'm gonna go to um member Mylani Makainai, then to Uncle Dan. And then if there are, and then back to Uncle John one last time. And if there are any other board members online, and then I'm gonna move on to community um input on this topic. Mylani?
Mahalo, um, I really feel strongly to jump on what um board member Ian Masterson is talking about. Uh, the highest point of that ridge in Ko'oloa is known as Kaneha'ala'ni. And he's the son of Ka'o'opulu'ulu, who was a kahu of this area and had made premonition of Ko'oloa being lost from our kingdom and, and becoming in the hands of outsiders. And that's exactly what happened. And Ko'oloa is the key to Oahu. So there's many things that you brought up that I have to mention on for the board and also for a community who's part of tonight's meeting. And um, yeah, I have concerns about recycling a stairway to, that had many problems, many different types of problems, safety issues as well, to then put it on another part of our island. So that's my mona'ola there. Mahalo.
Uh, Uncle Dan, you wanna um go to the microphone or you want one of these?
I just find, without that.
Thanks, Uncle Dan. Okay, Uncle John, one more thing from you.
Jiro, if you could just give me your email, I'll send you an issue that I'd like you to address in via a poll. J I R O dot S U M A D A at Honolulu dot com. And Chair, may I answer a, a, a comment from board members about the Haiku stairs?
Yes, please go ahead.
So what I reported was that DDC, the Department of Design and Construction, has contracted with a contractor. They executed the contract to remove the stairs. And what I said is that the contractor is responsible for recycling. Whatever deal he works out with, whoever he's gonna reuse that material, because that material is weathered, right? So the concept of moving it to uh Ko'oloa Ranch, that's a whole separate subject, whole separate initiative, not in part of the contractor's contract that he has with uh DDC. So the contract is to remove the stairs, contractor disposes of or recycles the material. That's what the city's gonna do. That's why Councilmember Kiana, when she spoke, I guess, mentioning that it's up to Ko'oloa Ranch. That's there, that's a whole separate thing. Not us. So just to clarify, so there's no, you know, misconceptions afterwards.
Jiro, are you able to disclose to the community um who the contractor is by chance?
Well, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's named, uh, but yeah, I don't know who it is.
Okay, um, if you did know who it was, would you be able to disclose?
I can, yeah.
For next meeting, if possible. Thank you. Um, I see Barry, I see your hand online. Barry, do you have something to add to this?
Thanks.
Or is your, is your hand just up on accident?
Yeah, thank you. Just real quick, I wanted to um respond to um member Art Machado's question about fire hydrants on Kamamea Highway from Heia uh Pier, was a hygienic store. Um, I looking at the, the system map and yeah, there are gaps uh where uh there are no hydrants or the spacing is too far apart. So we'll take a, we'll take a look at that and um, you know, possibly create a project to install more hydrants on Kamamea Highway. So, so I wanted to add that. Thank you.
Mahalo Barry. Okay, I'm gonna move to community. Oh, call him my Anti-Raki and then going to community.
I just wanted to mention one more thing. Um, on the corner of uh Heia Kea, right past the Heia Kea Strip, um, someone put in a permit to build a house, but the, the, I don't know if you guys gave any permits out to build that house, the um, on the Makai side of the road. But I did see a big crane there about two weeks ago, doing some construction there. I was just wondering if there was any permits issued out to do crane work on the shoreline in Heia Kea. It's a shoreline property.
Uh, okay, and you can, some of you guys, you can give me an address, like close by? That's oh, good.
Joe, you got the address? Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Okay, uh, Uncle Cliff, you got something else to say? Uncle, use the mic, please. Thank you.
On that note, that, that property talking about. On that note, the property talking about, all the boulders that was on that property once upon a time is all on the ocean side. But you gotta go in a boat before you can see them. Other than that, you don't know nothing. All the big boulders is down on the ocean side. There'll be a retaining wall. You gotta go in a boat. Other than that, out of sight, out of mind. Nobody know.
I can take you to your own.
Retaining wall.
If you want to coordinate something, I can take you out. Okay. I'm gonna move on to community board unless you have anything else, board members? No? Okay. Do you want to come? Sorry, since we have Jero at the main mic, community, if you want to come speak, can you come up to my mic, please?
Aloha, Kristi Kaluiva. So on the issue on the safety of driving around that corner that we all talked about, I'd like to also add that when the city bus passes that area, they have to sometimes cross over the line because of the cars that are parked on the road. So that again adds an additional safety measure. And then, thank you for asking the question about can we know who the contractor is? And would we be able then to reach out to that contracting company to find out? We're allowed to. Yep.
Thank you, Kristi. Anyone else in the room? Please come to the mic.
Marisa Mujo. Regarding the area we're talking about with the fencing, the guardrails going from Heia Kea, is there an erosion forecast study for that whole area that is rapidly falling into the sea? And when, last time I went by, about two weeks ago, looked like there was a consistent crack in the pavement from virtually the pier for a good mile. They don't want to put fire hydrants. But it seems like it's an issue, erosion issue.
Oh, good. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Okay, community member Melody Aduhua. Go ahead, Melody.
Thank you. Yeah, with regards to the contractor, last Sunday's paper indicated that the city awarded a $2.85 million demolition contract to Nakoa Companies, Inc. And they specialize in complex infrastructure projects and will be working on the removal of the Haiku stairs and the Moanalua saddle stairs. The city's Department of Design and Construction announced last week. So that's that. And regarding what I guess Kristi had mentioned, the last, second to last speaker, I agree with her. When the bus goes around that area of Heia Kea Pier, it's very dangerous because they do cross over the line and it creates quite a danger, especially those that may be pedestrians or on mopeds. I mean, I haven't seen it that much lately, but I am aware of an accident that had happened with a moped going around that corner and a bus going around that corner. And the gal that was a tourist riding the moped ended up along one of those electric poles and is totally disabled as a result. So yeah, it does create a substantial danger. I am concerned though because a lot of the vehicles that park along there have the trailers for their boats and that creates a problem. We're gonna have a parking issue. So I don't know whether Heia Kea could increase the amount of parking available within its parking lot so that it can accommodate the other people that do end up parking along Kamameha Highway. Thank you.
Mahalo, Melody. So Jero, the address for the property with the crane concern that Antiraki had mentioned is 47-083 Kamameha Highway?
47 what?
47-083 Kamameha Highway.
Okay, thank you.
Mahalo. Any other community members online have anything for mayor's rep? Seeing none. Thank you so much, Jero. Moving on to Kanyeh Bay Regional Council, Clifford Lu. Okay, can you give Antiraki the, can you give Antiraki the mic, Uncle Cliff? Because for the recording, it's easier when we're talking about.
Tomorrow night is the meeting, the Kanyeh Bay Regional Council meeting, and it's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Kanyeh Atrium Building. The address is 46-004 Kava Street, Suite 104. And I think it's hybrid, but the community is welcome.
Is that it, Antiraki?
That's it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Moving on to Heia Kea Pier, Small Boat Harbor representative, harbor master, sorry, Tanya Bora Bora. Tanya, are you online with us?
No, but I wanted to give a big shout out to her because today she oversaw the removal by sea engineering of Popo II, the boat that was sunk. So it's sitting on the harbor. They're gonna demolish it on Friday.
Okay, mahalo to Tanya. Moving on, US Congress Representative Jill Tokuda or someone from the office? Anyone with us from Jill Tokuda's office? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to Kanyeh Marine Corps Base, Canary Sergeant Orlando Perez, are you with us? Oh, it's you, Auntie Christie. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
I get to my hat. Aloha, thank you, Chair. Thank you of board and members of our community, our community. So I'll start by just touching on, maybe I can get with you folks afterwards to talk about the art since you guys are gonna come tomorrow.
Oh, my thanks. No, all good.
And then to touch on Uncle Danny, what you had mentioned. They did tell me to make sure that you folks knew that from the last time that we were here, there was no wastewater the last four weeks. I will make sure that we get that information. I did want to start off with something positive. We're going to have a unit support the Okui Manu 50th Anniversary. They're doing a big fair on September 23rd. And so a unit's gonna be out to support that. And then PISA's office talked about the Swansea Beach to address coastal erosion. And we also are partnering with the University of Hawaii. They're doing a coastal research program on the Marine Corps Base. They've been using some drones to scope out some of the coastal erosion that's occurring there as well. And hopefully, all of this collaboration will assist with moving forward. Let's see, what else they can tell me. So we are continuing to support with airlift equipment from Maui. And one of the really exciting things also that I wanted to share was our hui. So the hui for Nupia Pond met and I think we shared that we signed with Heile from Paipai, the MOU, and we had the new base CO come out to Paipai last week, the 25th of August, and gave him a tour and a walk around the pond. And we continue to talk about the way forward of restoring Nupia Pond. Today, Heile met with the environmental and with June Clayhorn from archaeologist to scope out a specific spot for the hui to get together to begin to work on that restoration. We're supposed to have our first workday on the 14th, but I think because that's veterans, it's a holiday that weekend, so we may move it on Monday. But that's really moving forward and the CO is very progressive in wanting to see restoration and working with. So I have a few folks have any questions?
Thanks, Auntie Christie.
Just one question. The workday at Nupia Pond, is that open to the public?
We're working on what that group is going to provide. I am pretty sure it's going to be. Because we're wanting to connect it with the weed warrior program that they have, and that's open to the public. So I am going to say more than likely yes.
Can you please keep us updated in like how public is able to access the base or specific things like that?
Yep.
Okay.
Antiraki, go ahead.
No, just to bring everybody up to form what's happening with Nupia Fish Pond. This took us over 50 years. You remember when Randy Kalahiki and my husband, every single commander that came on base, we met with them. This is the last commander, what the commander that came out of base and met with us. And this present commander came out of base and met with us. We finally got a memorandum of agreement, MOU, where they're signed with Fish Pond. We do have a hui to do restoration on the Nupia Fish Pond. And it's gonna be open to the public, but we gotta be aware of that. You gotta put your name in ahead of time because of security with the marine bases, automatic, we all do that. But the point is, I just want to know that this is historical because talk about resilience, it took us 50 years to make it happen. I lived to see it happen. Randy died already, my husband died already, but they met with every single commander. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Antiraki, for all of your community service over the years.
There was, there was a video that Dad did back in the 70s and it's still currently on YouTube. I have made sure that Colonel Cooperoffis, who was our previous and our current Colonel Bevan, both have observed it and watched it, as well as some of our other staff, so that they would understand the importance of, you know, why. And I always reiterated what the rest of that said, mom, it's been 15 years. That the business, you know, tried to happen. In addition to that, let me just add one more thing, and that's about the invasive species. We participated with the Waimanalo. We plan to participate with the Ben Parker as well. And just be engaged in what's going on and how we can better support that so that it doesn't further extend out.
Thank you. Any other board members in the room have any other questions for MC BH? Any board members online? Community in the room? Community online? Seeing none. Thank you, Auntie Christie. Moving on to community topics, we're gonna have a presentation from Kathleen Pahinui about Board of Water Supply Rate Increases. Hi, Kathleen. How are you doing, Barry?
Hi, Chair. Yeah, I'm gonna be giving the presentation tonight, so if I could share my screen.
Okay, yes, go ahead. Logan, can you help Barry with that presentation, sure?
Can you folks all see that?
It's coming up. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my name is Barry Usagawa with the Water Resources Division at the Board of Water. I'm here with our deputy, Erin Kawata, and our, let's see, who else is here? Steven Nordstrom and Stella Bernano from our communications office. Sorry if I missed anybody else. This presentation is about the Board of Water Supply Propose rate increases. The information should be on our website. If it wasn't passed, I'll see you folks previously. This presentation is about our rate increase, presented to the community to inform and obtain feedback for our Board of Directors who will make the decision on the rates in the November timeframe. So, let's see. Okay. So yeah, we have a complex island-wide water system that provides 145 million gallons of water per day to a million people. It's very complex and it takes a lot to operate and maintain and replace the system to provide water to our customers every day. If you didn't know, the Board is semi-autonomous and it's funded by rate pairs. There's no funding from property taxes and the rate increase only applies to water and not to sewer. This is a breakdown of how our budget is. 31% is for operation and maintenance. Our electricity cost is about 12% of the total. But anyway, there's a breakdown there. And of our capital improvement program, the projects that we've done in the 2018 to 2023 timeframe amounted to about $770 million of improvements with almost 500 projects to repair and replace this complex water system. But not everything has gone as we hoped. COVID-19 caused big changes in our customers' water use patterns and certain motion, many other impacts such as inflation and material supply chain issues that increase our operating maintenance and replacement costs. The total inflation has increased at a higher rate than our revenue increases by about 8%. So it did reduce our purchasing power. Despite our over reductions in our energy consumption, shown in purple here, the energy cost factor per kilowatt hour, shown in green, has increased from 10 to 30 cents per kilowatt hour. And as a result, our monthly costs shown in the orange have risen quickly. In 2023, we paid about $33 million in electricity, about 20% over our budget. And of course, Red Hill contamination is forcing us to invest in expensive monitoring wells and exploratory wells to replace the 17.5 million gallons of potable water capacity in our system. And the full impacts and costs are still uncertain. We haven't, while we have self-funding from the federal government, we haven't gotten any funding from the Navy per se. But we have tightened our belt. We chose not to pass the energy cost increases to our customers. We deferred purchases of replacement vehicles and other equipment, and we deferred less critical capital projects. And the benefit is that despite the high inflation, we're able to hold our budget relatively flat through this, to the 2024 budget year. We're striking, our strategy is to strike a balance of the rate increases between safe and dependable water service and rate affordability. And the increases we are proposing will raise about $550 million of additional funding over five years. And this will continue to fund our operation and maintenance in addition to over $1 billion in critical infrastructure investments. The two biggest areas of investment are new sources, which is in yellow, and in brown, our pipeline replacement program. Getting to rates, there are five customer classes, single-family, multifamily, agriculture, non-residential, and non-potable and recycled water rates. The single-family accounts for 90% of our customer accounts, using about a third of the total production. And we provide that at slightly below cost of service, cost to serve them. But non-residential consists of 5% of our accounts, but provides about the same amount of water as residential. Those charges are higher than our cost, 117%. And that difference is used to subsidize in part single-family and multifamily residential, agriculture and non-potable recycled water rates. So the water rates that we're proposing for the next four or five and a half year period from 2024 to 2028 are increasing at, proposed to be increased at 10%. About February of 2024 is when we expect the first rate increase to kick in. Then July 2024 is another 10%, and then nine, eight and a half, eight and eight, all the way up to July of 2028. All customer classes will have the same rate increase. So it's a plan of course the board. And for residential customers, we have a tiered rate schedule. The low water users pay lower water rates, which supports affordability. And while higher water rate users pay more to encourage conservation. So we have an essential needs tier is limited to 2.5% increase per year. This is well below our costs. And this is for the first 2,000 gallons per month. All residential customers get this rate. And 10% actually of our residential customers use 2,000 gallons or less. So thank you for them for conserving. But we recognize the need to keep our rates affordable at the lowest tier for low-income and elderly customers. As you can see, it does ramp up the more you use and it's designed to encourage conservation by our highest water users. So what's in blue is the current rate. What's in orange will be the rate proposed in 2028. So what's in blue is the current rate, what's in orange will be the rate proposed in twenty twenty-eight. So the highest water user will get the biggest increase, and again, that's to encourage conservation. The next couple of slides are just tables of, of how the residential and all the rates kind of are spaced out over the five-year period and through the different tiers, I won't go through them, you can look it up at our, you know, website. But this is a single-family residential rates. We show how to calculate your water bill, on the water side, not the source. We have a monthly customer charge, that's, that increases by meter size. It's a cost to read the meter and to repair and replace those meters, so it's separate from the, that variable quantity rate. The, the next couple of slides are just examples of what bills would be for the low-water user through the five-year period. The average water user of nine thousand gallons per month and the high-water user for thirty-five thousand gallons per month. And you can look it up again in our website. The multifamily similarly has these rate tiers, we, you know, in a high-rise building, we take the amount of water use and divide it by the units, number of units in the building, and that's how we calculate the rate there. Again, this is, you know, but the sample bills for depending on how much, how many units. The non-residential customer rates are flat, meaning they're not tiered. They're five twenty-seven, five dollars and twenty-seven cents per thousand gallons now. And they will, you know, increase accordingly, but they're flat, they don't have tiers because non-residential has a bigger range of water users, so from parks to warehouses to golf courses to commercial, you know, shopping centers like that, they're all kind of different, so you have a flat rate point across the board. Examples of some of the bills, as you can see on our website again, wanted to point out that we wanna, we wanna continue our subsidized rate for agriculture, commercial agriculture and, and recycled water. So it's subsidized from the non-residential rates, and we'll continue to waive our impact fees for affordable and homeless housing and for the retrofit of fire sprinklers for high-rise buildings. We also are considering waivers of our meter installation fee and our impact fee, our water systems facilities charges for, for new farmers, for small meters, three-quarter and one-inch meters connecting to the B W system for the first time. And it's limited to one million dollars, which was a grant from the state of state legislature, thanks to Ryan, Representative Ryan Yamani, who's no longer there, but he was, he was a key figure to appropriate the one million dollars for, to promote and support local agriculture. I talked about conservation measures to, you know, if you wanna control your bill, use less water. And we have a, building a pretty robust conservation rebate program called Water Sensible, it's also on our website. We're considering new water conservation programs for, especially focused on our top water users, hotels and businesses and townhomes, but also a direct install for Capuna living on their own. So this would be where we would come into their home and replace showerheads and, and do some water audits and help them reduce their bills even further. Where this is a rate adoption process, we're in the bottom here by, you know, the public input. We've had four community meetings throughout the ad, and we had one in Ben Parker, I think in August. And we're going through all the neighborhood boards to explain our rates and ask for feedback. And you can submit your feedback up to October fifteenth, and this is our contact information through letter emails or phone. And that's my presentation, I hope I made the ten-minute limit, and then we're available for any questions.
Mahalo Barry, Uncle Dan and then Auntie Rocky. Sorry Barry, did you hear that?
I'm sorry, I did not.
Okay, Uncle Dan.
Would you consider having another rate for folks who are less than two thousand gallons a month? In other words, even better if they could use less than two thousand. Your lowest, right? Is, you can't be, you can't get a bill for less than two thousand gallons per month, right? How about changing it so you could, we can have it for a thousand or two thousand?
Well, the, that lower rate will apply if you use only a thousand a month.
That's my point, it should be even lower if somebody uses a thousand. But you don't recognize that yet.
Yeah, thank you for that, it's, it's pretty hard to use less than a thousand gallons a, a month, but.
Well, we do, we're less than two thousand all the time.
That's good, I'm like four thousand, and I only got three people, so.
I'd like to see showering at the park.
Appreciate your conservation.
Barry, I, I think, this is Joe with the Board of Water.
Wait, hold on, Uncle Ken, Uncle Ken, I'm going to, board members in the room first and then board members online, so Auntie Rocky is next.
Mahalo Barry for your presentation, I went to other neighborhood board meetings and heard the presentation, it was so boring and yours was so, and by the end of their, their presentation, couldn't understand half of it, but yours is so clear and very good. But I have a question, I know you force have the technology to know if you have a water leak on your premises, am I correct? If you can, can you check the leaks in other people's residential properties? And their, their water, the bill goes up high?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for your question there, and we, we do monitor usage and if it goes up, we're supposed to catch that, but also we have a way to, it's called Water Smart, it's on our website, where you can review your, your past water uses compared to other users in your, in your area. And if you do go up, then we have investigators that can, that, that are specifically looking for leaking wastes and can help individual customers to, you know, give you tips and stuff. If it's a property leak, a property piping like you had before, it has a huge impact. You know, there's, there's ways to, you know, adjust bills and stuff through our customer care division. But yeah, we, we, you know, we're certainly trying to reduce the amount of leakage in our system, but also on the private side too is, is important. And it's, it's good for the customers to be aware of how much water they use and to catch it early because it can build up, so, thank you. By the way, I, I was a miss, I didn't catch Kathleen Pahinui is also on, and Joe Cooper, our Finance Chief is also on. So I think Joe had a, another answer to your, the one thousand lower rate, but anyway, did I answer your question, Auntie?
Yes, my suggestion to the Board of Water Supply is maybe you guys can get a branch in your water supply to look into things like that, you know? Don't wait for people like myself, I got caught and they didn't realize that I had an underground leak until it went up into the thousands of dollars. But you know, if you can notify the people, the user that unaware of what's happening, this is what's happening, your water bill is gonna pine. You know, we could fix it before it gets that high, I mean, that's something I'd like to suggest. Another thing is the reusable water, you know, recycled water, like Clifford said about the graveyard, why can't places like that use reusable water and save the, the vibe for sustainability for human consumption? For, for food consumption, edible crops, even the farms, the flower farms is not something that we're not gonna eat can use reusable water. Darryl Farms can use this, the, the clean stream water, I mean, these are things that we really, really gotta look into because right now the water is drastically in danger.
Thank you.
Bye Lenny.
Mahalo Barry for your presentation, the rate hikes don't seem to be too insane. But my question is, how is the federal government or the military affecting these rate hikes? Are they a determining factor as to the rate hikes in the next five years? And if not, I mean, they plan to develop more in MCBH? So how does that affect rate hikes even after the five years and then other future developments on the island? Mahalo.
Thank you for the question, and I'll, I'll push that over to Joe Cooper, our Finance Chief. And I can add something on the marine base after that. Joe?
Well, currently, I mean, you know, the, the, we haven't received any reimbursement from the federal government or the Navy for the, for the cost of responding to Red Hill and to any of the Red Hill issues. We are, the only cost that we're actually experiencing right now are developing, doing drilling, monitoring and, and exploratory wells to find new sources. So the total cost of, of our response is not known. And we are pursuing, you know, every avenue we can to get reimbursement from the federal government. We haven't, like I said, received anything to date, and we appreciate all the help and that, that the community can provide for us in trying to get the federal government to compensate the local, our local customers for this cost.
Yeah, thanks Joe, and as for the marine base here, we had a meeting with the new Colonel Beavens a couple of months ago, and they're committed to water conservation, but they still haven't been able to get their recycled water over to the golf course. They still have Department of Health conditions that they have to meet, so it's currently being irrigated with potable water, which we don't like, but, you know, they're trying to keep it, you know, as, as low as they can. But eventually they'll get on the recycled water, and that's gonna really make a difference in our water system. So hopefully they can do that over the next couple of years and, and meet those conditions and, and get the recycled water over to the golf course.
Mahalo Barry. Any other board members in the room? Uncle Cliff, go ahead.
Yeah, getting back on the recycled water for the golf course. I don't think that those ground maintenance guys wanna fool around with that. Psychological, and it's wastewater. You know, as, I, I'm pretty sure they don't wanna, you know, like the irrigation pipes. You know, I don't know if they are regular plumbers or general labor, you know, doing that kind of work. It's like on the state highway, airport area, once upon a time, it was all irrigating water from San Island. Now there's no water. And from what I heard, the guys that do the maintenance on the highway, hey, irrigate you, I don't want that, Joe. But that's the one, you know, I don't think they're gonna fool around with this water.
Yeah, thanks for that, Cliff. It's supposed to be disinfected. Our, we have, we, we provide what's called R1 irrigation recycled water to the Eva Golf Courses, and that is disinfected. So it's supposed to, it's safe for, for, for public contact. There's training, you have to treat it differently from, you know, any other type of water, there's rules and requirements. So, you know, it's just a matter of them being educated and trained in how to deal with it. I think even the R2 water that they used to provide to the Clipper Golf Course under the marine base is, is also chlorinated. And that's, that's a DOH rule, otherwise they cannot play it. But yeah, you know, safety for the users, and I think, you know, they, they need to understand that using recycled water and other types of non-potable water for irrigation conserves potable water for higher and best uses for drinking. And, you know, we just need to get our, our message out to those guys that, that have those types of concerns.
Yeah, wait, and one other one too, even, where was that? That Sioux Treatment Plant at Onolioli One?
Yeah.
One day I went in there, I was watching the irrigation water, because they got two hydrants in there, one potable water and one non-potable water. So this, I thought it was a blue hydrant or something, non-potable water, the blue hydrant, right? Anyway, I look at this irrigation sprinkler system going on, it's like, hey, look at this terrify here. They're not drawing for the non-potable, they take our drinking water irrigating. And here they can preach, but they're not gonna practice.
Oh, okay.
This is the Sioux Treatment Plant. That was a joke, you know, I, I look at it, these clowns, you know, they could tell everybody, second one. Did himself can do, you know, they can practice.
Yeah, we, we can reach out to the wastewater guys and remind them, you know, and if you folks see, you know, any kind of inappropriate type of use, please report it to Kathleen folks, and then they'll follow up with, with them. And Auntie Rocky, your point about being proactive about the leaks, that's something that we need to do to catch it before, you know, it starts to see it in a bill. So yeah, thanks for, for that, for that comment, we need to be more proactive.
Mahalo Barry. Any board members online have any questions or comments for Barry? Seeing none, community? Community online? Thanks so much for that presentation, Barry.
We appreciate your time and your questions, very good questions, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on. HFD sent me a wildfire action guide. I'm going to ask NCO to send it out to anyone who would like a copy of it. It is twenty pages long, and I won't pretend to be any type of emergency response authority. Marie, is there anything you wanna add to the recent events in Lahaina and what we would like to?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Maurice Murio, I'm representing right now our local organization for Kanioli Kahalu SIRD, Emergency Response Team. Been involved with this group for over a decade now, so nice to see new people that haven't been around for a while, but I've been around. And that's the second part. I had talked about it, there is a program, I do not have bias for everybody, so what do I do?
If, if you want, and is it online, we can distribute it to anybody that wants to, we'll just, we'll just pass it around the room, yeah.
We have a program for a couple of years, not many. There has been a program in the state for a couple of years now about addressing wildfires. I even came to the board a couple of years ago when this first started. And the attitude about us is we're green and wet and it ain't gonna happen. Well, that's not true, and that's not true at all. I had talked to Ken before thinking that he was still gonna pull stuff up, so if you wanna do this on your own, I'd like you to take a look at Breezy Point, New York, Superstorm Sandy. This was a Brooklyn Shore community occupied by mostly firemen and police that disappeared in a fire during Superstorm Sandy with floodwaters and winds and rains. The only thing that was similar to Lahaina was the winds. Something blew over here and there and there and there and there, no matter what was going on. Floods in the streets or the torrential rains, the winds took flames and wiped out over two hundred. Okay, so it can happen, it can happen. This program is geared to help you. Your property has cleared. I don't know if you followed this with the guy in Lahaina whose home did not get destroyed because he had X amount of area cleared and he had special wall, et cetera, et cetera. This is not that involved, but close, close to it, okay? And there are people to assist you in looking at your home or property and moving it along. Unfortunately, since Lahaina, our main coordinator has been getting calls from everybody. So it's a rather busy system right now. There is also assistance if you're dealing with a church or any kind of community organization that you feel might be endangered from foliate. And Team Rubicon, are you familiar? Team Rubicon is generally military retirees, and they are exceptionally active in the community. And they come out and they clear property. They have cleared the property of Haula, where they are building a hub, and it's all volunteers, and they're good at it. So this program, you know, like we live in country, this is really hard for us. So this program, you know, like we live in country, this is really hard for us, because I look at my own property and it's, I don't want to lose them. But looking at what happened. And we also have to consider that looking at what happened in Lahaina and what has to happen to rebuild it, we're going to face a lot of stuff like insurance and investigations of are you a hazard in your home? This is only just in snow. And so it's not 20 pages. Like what is, what is that thing?
Um, it was from HFD. They had sent just like a pretty detailed guide of how to help prevent wildfires in the community. So. Yep, so the address online on the flyer that Marie just gave us is hawaiewildfire.org/lookout. Board members, does anybody have questions for Marie? Online, seeing none, community? Community online, none. I just want to make a quick comment. Dottie Kelly Paddock out in Ha'ula has been trying to get a community resiliency hub together for some years. Senator Wa was trying to assist in getting some funding this past legislative session. Unfortunately, we weren't able to proceed with that funding. I think Lahaina is a prime example of why we need a community resiliency hub, not only in Ha'ula, but throughout our communities. Marie has been, you know, yeah, prompting us as a board to get some kind of plan together, and we haven't been successful at that. And I think we should address that moving forward. I, again, am no expert in that, so if anybody has expertise in that and wants to start the discussion on that, please throw it out now, Marie. No, throw it out, go ahead. Yeah, now's the time.
The day after Lahaina, I started to get involved. I belong to represent Kanioe Kahalu on BOAT. BOAT is a national voluntary organizations active in disaster. Within 48 hours, we had over 130 agencies from around the country that wanted to come in in Lahaina. And of course, we know you couldn't in that kind of circumstance, but the amount of outpour, the outpouring, these are public and private agencies from everywhere, they did everything. I stayed involved with it because I wanted to learn from what's out there and how does a community handle a disaster. All I've been doing with the guys over these years is prepare, prepare, prepare. But I began to realize as the country is in a mess, that it's recovery, response and recovery that becomes the issue. You could have had your go bag in Lahaina, and I'm sorry, your go bag went. Okay, it did not come, you are by yourself, and that's how fast, you know, it could happen. So I started to really pay attention to the work groups that they have at BOAT that dealt with recovery too. And there are so many, but I've learned a tremendous amount. Wanted to approach two things with our SIRD groups around the island, plus I have a meeting coming up on the 20th Zoom. And I've asked them to address two things for the start of this. One is the communication system that went down immediately. It took three days to get everything back up. Their hams too didn't even make it. And I know you guys haven't gotten ham radio licenses, so I'm not even very important. Nonetheless, if that was a problem too, and it took three days. And that's really, I can't imagine how stressed that, stressful that is for your survivors if you have no real communication going on. And it can be avoided, it really, really can be. That brings to the hub situation. That was the second thing that I discussed at our cross-island meeting. And John, what I'm intending to do is ask our island communities to identify sites that they feel could be used as they call pods, soup pods, or hubs. And they all basically mean the same thing. Where can we get a whole bunch of stuff and get it out to the community? Okay, but we can't say it has to be here or anywhere, because you don't know what kind of disaster you're going to have, mess you're going to be in. So the more sites you have, and you know, you've got better in the brain, then the better it is when the disaster strikes. So an hour, we're talking with SIRD, two hours, or this will probably throw out. And EDM is the Department of Emergency Management, and that's another story. Anyway, starting in my neighborhood, we looked at Tines Market and Ahu'ulano Elementary still there, but here, okay, which is what had been presented when we had the hub meeting here, or up at, yeah, Kahalu Elementary. We also targeted Ahu'ulano Elementary and, oh, well, Kula, but that's kind of pushing, you know, pushing out of bounds. But those, those are what we had in about Tines, Ahu'ulano, Kahalu, and possibly Wa'ahole. So what I was going to ask you guys is, you know, if you have another area that can, or they can go. So be sure they go to churches. That's, that's, generally speaking, primary place people flee to. But that's not what we're necessarily looking at, that's part of it. And we don't want it to happen to us like it happened in Tino, where they've got stuff with ceilings, people don't have to have security, what's going on? But those two things, as many of you as possible, try and get your ham license, at least get a ham. And if you're in fact, you're supposed to get a license, but at least get a ham. And another thing, at least have an FRS, at least have a plan with family on the main that you can use as a contact, because you know it falls in and out. If we haven't.
Thanks, Marie. Okay, moving on in our agenda, Uncle John wanted to go over some things for the draft environmental assessment for Wa'ahole. I have a copy of it on the back table if anybody wants it. I'm going to leave it here at Key Project in their living library.
I just want to give you really simple. First, I want to thank Heok Brenton, your office, for making some copies to get out to people to actually read. Really helpful, because as we said in the last neighborhood board meeting, those copies weren't available, hard copy weren't available at the Kanioe Library, as the consultants say that they would. And then also thanks for weighing in on extending the deadline for accepting comments. So that deadline is this Friday, the 15th. And I know various people have been looking through the documents and are going to be submitting comments. The neighborhood board has taken a pretty good, strong position, consistent both back in November of 2022, when we got the first letter notice about the EA, and then also at our, at our recent meeting. And the gist of our position as a neighborhood board was that we want the state to be looking at not just get out of the silo, HHFDC needs to get out of its own property and look at resilience. You know, when you're, when you're going to renovate a water system like Wa'ahole, and you have the Wa'ahole ditch at the 750-foot level flowing every day from Kahana to Wa'ahole, regardless of allocation of water to seaward or winward. We're saying, let's look at the potential of things like hydroelectric power. It's not something that we're used to talking about, but it's been done in other places. So that's, that's one of the things that as they're looking at renovating this system or improving this system, look at, look at the potential of power being generated basically on site in that Ahu'ua. In the long run, no matter what, whatever they do with the water system, hydroelectric power or generating power within any, within any given Ahu'ua is going to be critical for resilience. You know, I've been wading through this document, too. It's really interesting, some real falsifications. HHFDC stating that, the document stating that the strategic planning process that we were in, that started in 2016, was completed, it was not. And that's absolutely not true. The strategic plan effort basically got abandoned by both HHFDC and the Wa'ahole Waikana Community Association. Others of us wanted it to continue, and it didn't, but we will make it continue. My, my own personal, I'm going to put my own personal feeling out there. We have a running system, basically. It involves wells up Maoko that, that pump up to a surge tank, 2100 gallon surge tank that then fills up the reservoir, the million gallon reservoir. Everybody in Wa'ahole, everybody in Wa'ahole, private, Ulliana Parcels, the HHL, HHFDC, has water from that reservoir, except our farm. Our farm is, is, our takeoff is between the reservoir and that upper surge tank. So if something goes wrong with the well system, if the power goes out, we're the canary in the coal mine farm, and I look at my pressure gauge and, oh, the water pressure is off. I call Dunwood Engineering, I call HHFDC, I let them know, okay, we'll send somebody, and they go look. Typically, the response is going to be, they're going to go up, they're going to see something where there's no power to the pumps. They call HECO. HECO is responsible for delivering power to the system. HECO is going to take a quick look, probably going to get a helicopter, fly the line that goes from Hiram Fong's place all the way to the back of Wa'ahole. And hope, yeah, there's an Albeja on the line or something, there's something, the lines are crossed, something's happened. And so then they send in crew to resolve the problem. I've seen this happen over 40 years, it's been going on. The HHFDC was supposed to install roughly a $50,000 backup generator. They haven't. Other than that, the system is electrically dependent. Yes, it requires electricity to get the wells to pump, and then to reach the up road, the North Fork of Wa'ahole, there's a booster station to get water beyond the elevation of the reservoir and get it up to big people like Suku Kupao and others. Again, electrically dependent. My contention is, why not generate the electricity close to the pumps? Then it could leave the system alone. No, but HHFDC wants to develop a system that is to the border water supplies standards, and they understand that, because they don't want to be in the water prevailing business. They want to hand off the system to the Board of Water Supply, that Board of Water Supply maintained it. From BWS's standpoint, I can understand that, yeah, if it's to our standards, we'll take it, because that gives them yet another source. From Wa'ahole's position, it's like, make sure that if, if that happens, don't be taking water that impacts our stream flow, the estuary and all, all of what we fought for in the Wa'ahole Contest Case Hearing. So, so there are some concerns there. So anyway, there's, there's a lot common in this different. One of the issues that HHFDC raises is that the pumps, the system is at the end of its planned life, right? Wells have a, I mean, the well pumps and so on have a lifespan. Well, then replace them. You're going to either spend 27 million, build a whole new system with a whole new pumps, that system anyway, on the North Fork, or you continue to repair the system that exists. Again, they don't like to be in the, in the water prevailing business. They also raise a concern about the road, the access, it's about a mile and a half that goes from where we go through the gate to the watershed, all the way up to the back of the valley towards the pumps up. And they raise that issue as if that's a real burden on HHFDC, but they're not the only ones who use that road. The Agribusiness Development Corporation that is coming into ownership of the Wa'ahole ditch will be using that road forever. So why HHFDC doesn't want to get out of their silo and collaborate with the other state agencies that are involved is beyond me. So those are the kind of issues I want to raise. I plan to submit my own comments. I also spoke with Isaac Morawaki at Earth Justice, the Defense Fund. They asked them to take a look at it, because they were the attorney that represented us in the Wa'ahole ditch case. And I reached out to Hawaiian Electric themselves to say, can you give us some more detail as to what maintaining that power through those pumps has cost you over all these years? There's a lot of missing information. So why am I going into this? Because I think it takes a bigger look. In our, even in our strategic planning effort, which was my idea that I took to HHFDC, thankfully they picked up the idea and went with it. Nonetheless, the strategic planning effort did not include Department of Education, school, which could be an emergency shelter. It didn't include DOT, got to replace a ridge down by the highway, no matter what. It didn't include Department of Fine Homelands, they have lots in the valley. It didn't include the Agribusiness Development Corporation, they own the ditch tunnel. It didn't include the LNR with respect to all the Ma'akua watershed, where we're dealing with all kinds of issues. So, you know, a half-assed effort, excuse my friend, a half-assed effort is a waste of money and a waste of time. And so that's why we didn't approve, as a community, we didn't approve of the strategic plan that was first put together. We wanted that effort to continue. So when the rug gets pulled out, and then they represent that it was, it was really frustrating. Okay, thanks for the soapbox, I'll stop there.
Malo, Uncle John, board members in person, anything to add? Ian, you have something to add? Oh, call him, I, just call him, Ian, I'm going to go to Kiony in the room and then to you.
I just wanted to touch base on that, the draft environmental assessment, the copy that you can see online. I don't know if anybody out there has looked at it, but if you go and you access it online, it's actually really easy to navigate to find anything specifically you're looking for by just typing in a specific keyword. So anything that you have concerns about, like the book is very thick, those of you out there, it's like super thick, like a novel. So like if you go on the online version and you just type in a keyword for something that you're looking to see, or if it's even there, it's actually very, very helpful. So I just wanted to just throw that in, so people can like get to the information they're looking for quicker.
That's really helpful. This is not a Wa'ahole issue. This is a planning exercise. It's very important for people. I think, to me, I find it fascinating, it's the kind of stuff I like to read before I go to bed. But really, it's a very interesting issue. This is a, you know, the ditch tunnel is a 100-year-old, actually more than that, system. The, the potential for being, for achieving things like distributed energy and so on is there. We could be looking Ahu'ua by Ahu'ua around the whole island to figure out, how are we going to be resilient when we get hit, Puerto Rico, that's, that's what we all have to be looking at. So, yeah, thanks.
Ian, last thing, if I can throw in. Let me go to Ian first, because I already called him before.
Go for it, Ian.
Go, Ian.
I could defer, since you're on fire, John. I was just going to say. Yeah, Corvus Kingdom is another option for one of those resilience hubs that Dottie was talking about, and that that should weigh on what we're doing down on our side, because honestly, Cool Ranch House is on low ground, and all of us have really a hard time getting there. So I'm still firing off on the chat, and nobody can see it anymore, so just to let you know, I don't know if I can.
Only Logan can see it.
Yeah, only Logan can see it. So just, just to, I, I put it in the chat, but rather just to say that it is hard for us to get out to the point when we're in these low-lying grounds in the back of, of the bay. So, but I would turn over the rest of my time to the Fire Ants if I just heard John say that.
Okay, thank you, Uncle John, 30 seconds.
I'm not going to talk about Fire Ants. What Marie mentioned about ham radios, and we've been talking about communication, what happens when communication goes down? And I've been, I haven't had a good connection in my house forever, been talking to everybody in Hawaiian Tel from the top to the bottom. I finally said to heck with it, Kaanapu Jacobson, one of our neighbors, who's been, was a federal firefighter, he's been in Lahaina for the better part of the last couple of months. He texted me, he said, forget Hawaiian Tel, get a Starlink. I came home from a meeting, I took a right turn, went to Best Buy, and I bought a Starlink for $600. And I paid the price monthly, charge is $120. And so you can call me at my house, and I can get on the internet. It works, the damn thing works, it's amazing. So the reason I bring that up is the various sites, the various resiliency sites, hubs and so on, that we, if we really want to prepare, Key Project should have a Starlink, Starlink unit, maybe Hakepoo needs one, maybe Akko Evi needs one, build those into Build those into their budgets. And no matter what, the lines might get burned, you know, it could get blown down, whatever, you're gonna be able to get online and that's critical, so.
Marie.
In conjunction with that, there's a grant, the Lions Club brought it up, P. E. Lina? Yeah, and, yes, yes. And it's coming, I mean, it's like do now, but it's this kind of thing, so. Wanna talk about it and throw out a grant, see what we get, a couple of thou.
Joe.
Aloha, I'm gonna make two comments. One of them is on the resilience hubs. I think that it's awesome that we're thinking about building more of them in places that are needed, but I do also wanna shout out that we have funding needs for maintenance of the places that serve that. I don't know, that window has a hole in it and so every time it rains, it drops over there. I just wanted to shut that out. Okay, the other thing that I wanted to say is around the Waialhuli water system. I am not a resident of Waialhuli, but if the state is gonna drop $25 million on infrastructure, I would love for it to be modern technology with an understanding of climate change. I think that building out the same water system they put in 40 years ago is to give another 40 years of life to it, when we have technologies that could be producing electricity instead of consuming electricity. Like, I don't understand what we're waiting for in terms of investing in green technology and I don't understand that if we're not gonna do it, who's gonna do it? So that's my thought, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Rainbow.
Aloha, Nui Akako. Mahalo, Nui, for your comments, Joe and Uncle John, regarding the EA for the Waialhuli water system. I am in agreement with you folks on the importance of making things easy for community members to understand, digest. 400 pages is not something that's simple to look through. Additionally, I kakoa all those comments on modernization of projects and moving forward, we should make sure that those things are relevant to our times and the future. And then also just going back and supporting Joe's comments on the importance of resiliency hubs and also though, making sure that our communities are involved in the processes of creating those things and/or building out infrastructure that will support those things. And I think in some places, engagement sometimes gets skipped. Places like Key Project, I think, is an ideal example of a resilience hub that runs all year long. We are not equipped for an emergency, but we would love to be ready for those things and we.
Callamai, Rainbow. I think we lost you. Are you in Waialhuli, Rainbow? Okay, Rainbow, text Joe your comments. Or jump on again if you can. I'm gonna move on, Rainbow, if you wanna come back on, let me know. Community member Lily.
Aloha, can you folks hear me okay?
Yes, mahalo.
I just wanted to kakoa Uncle John's comments about the Waialhuli draft environmental assessment. I also wanted to point out that not only is HHFDC the agency that's preparing the, or hired consultants to prepare the environmental assessment, they're also the accepting agency. So there's no other agencies that will be reviewing the EA. So I encourage folks to include comments in there because that's the only way to ensure that there's any type of direction or guidance from the community as far as further determination on this project. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Lily, that is very pertinent information. Any other community members have anything to add? Great, we're moving on to residents. Oh, Callamai, Ian, go ahead, make it quick.
Lily, can you make, can you give us a link to that? Any chance you can give us a link to that?
I don't think there's a link for that. Ian.
Yeah, it's the same comments that Uncle John was talking about, but just encouraging folks to make those comments because HHFDC is the determining agency, accepting their own environmental assessment.
Oh, Roger that, thank you. Sorry, we still have the chat on our end.
If I could just add really quickly, anytime you're writing to any agency, it's good to CC others. HHFDC, the State Energy Division, the Agricultural Development Corporation, all of them exist under the Department of Business, Economic Development, Tourism. The other agency that's under DBED is the Office of Planning and Sustainability. And I think it would be smart to copy them with comments. That way, they're all looking over their shoulders.
Okay, Callamai, there is a link, I thought this form was expired even though I brought it with me. So there's forms here, physical forms for commentary for this DEA on the back table here. And then there's a very long link that I'm gonna pass over to Logan and ask him to drop into the chat for those of you who would like to make public comment.
Mahalo, Chair.
Mahalo, okay, we're moving on to residents and community concerns. Community concerns to offer up? Joe, go ahead.
Aloha again, thank you, everybody. I just wanted to give a really quick update on the little fire ant situation here in Waiea. So first off, shout out to our buddies on the neighborhood board for going around door to door with me. A couple of weeks ago, we were knocking on people's doors, saying like, yo, what's up? We need your phone numbers because you might have little fire ants, we're checking. It was a great squad, we had eight or nine people out there. The Ant Lab is trying to come out next week in order to treat the area. They still have a couple of places where they need to finish the delimiting. And so everybody who has the fire ants has been super, super, everyone that we got to talk to has been like, super friendly and compliant and like, nobody's beefing with us about stuff. There's one property that we still need to access and Rick's helping me get in touch with the people over there. What I do wanna acknowledge is that we, this is the timeline. They received the positive, the positive sample was received by OESK on August 2nd and identified as fire ants. On August 3rd, Key Project had a community meeting where they announced that the little fire ants were up the road. The following week, I said, guys, you know this is kind of bullshit, so I need to figure out what's going on with this because I do not like little fire ants in my valley. And that week, I went and found out it was way bigger than anybody hoped it was. The week after that, we were going around again, finding out how large it was. Week after that, we were knocking at stuff. Six weeks from identification to the first treatment is an unheard of timeline. It involved several people's volunteer time, it involved neighborhood board members being there, it involved a person using staff time from a community organization in order to be outreach-ing people. I was out there four days in that first week for three hours in the evening, putting peanut butter sticks around there. There are, if we think Department of Agriculture has a responsibility to be resolving invasive species, we need to hold them to that standard. And if we do not, if we think that they do and they think that they don't, then that needs to be addressed in their budget. And to wrap that up, I think, just know that we're doing everything we can up there, but with the current funding and staffing of these organizations like OESK, Ant Lab, C-Gaps, everybody that's involved, all these fingers that are wrapped up in all of this, still six weeks from identification of a sample to treatment is like a wildly fast timeline. And if you think that it should be faster than that, we need way more people involved. So that's my update on the Waiea little fire ants, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Community in the room, any other community in the room? Okay. Oh, okay, Uncle Rick.
I just wanted to notice everybody about the massive fuel load surrounding the, potential fuel load for fires surrounding the fall field, all of that holly cor. I mean, if that all went up, we've got homeless people in the bushes and that could go up like a torch, so. And the other thing I wanted to notice folks on is that where Waiea's stream enters the flood lagoon, the mangrove is just horrendous over there. So that needs to get addressed at some point. Soon.
Right, Kyoni?
Oh.
That, Marie, and then we'll come back to Kyoni.
Now, that might be a thing, John, Rick, about the team Rupan, that might be able to clean out that area that you are referring to. So we could talk about that later, all right?
Mahalo, Marie. Kyoni?
Okay, no, I just wanted to bring something back up that we spoke about recently. Kayak rentals in Kani Ohe Bay. So like, it's just, I asked earlier when the HHFDC representative was on, what that rescue was about. So I watched, I watched it from my house. It was like an hour and a half long helicopter flying back and forth in the bay in front of my house. There was a jet ski and a boat. Found out later that it was a couple that rented kayaks and then I'm finding them at the pier. It's kinda getting to the point where in my neighborhood specifically, like, we were told that the person that's renting the kayaks was supposed to just allow them to load at the residence. But they're like blocking them and like, we blocked in one of my neighbors one day, they just like dropped the kayak down in front of their car and then ran back to the ocean because they forgot something. And like, it's kinda getting out of hand, is what the neighborhood has been coming and reporting to me. Some of my neighbors have been sending me videos. I just wanted to address that again because it's, you know, it's one thing, it's one thing to run a business, right? Like, we understand people need to make money, but like, you're running it out of your neighborhood and like, they're not really paying attention to how it's affecting your neighbors with like, these questions come up. So I just wanted to readdress it. And now with that whole thing that happened with the helicopter flying for like an hour and a half, looking for somebody and then they ended up just being at the pier like, tax free money, man, all that fuel, man hours, all of that stuff is, the tally just keeps on building and building and building, right? And like, at very least, I believe that like, people with these types of small businesses that are like operating businesses out of their houses, that put people out into another nature. Like, oh yeah, here, it's a kayak, just go. I think there should be more regulation on how they are able to get permitted to do something like that. And just send people who aren't from here that don't understand that this morning it's beautiful. Ono winds dead, glass. And then this afternoon, we got torrentials coming in. Rain is blocking out the entire island from the sandbar, you cannot see the island, like, people aren't prepared for that kind of stuff, but like, we end up paying for it later. So like, that's the issues that I wanted to address from some of the constituents inside of my neighborhood and other neighborhoods that have the same.
Aloha, Kyoni. Anybody else in the room, do you want to respond to that?
I believe it's the same address that we've been having issue with. You, yeah, it's the same address, the same, same business owner. So we can pull up that address from past meetings and I can email it to you.
And the greater issue is.
Can you use the?
They were tagging on that rentals too. You like see on three ring circuits. You sit at the pier and you can see on three ring circuits. Plus, and you can, I mean, this kayak business is Kamaiina Kids one, that's the one. That's one of them, but that one there, when they come out, you laugh because they cannot make it out of the channel. They don't know how to barrel. And you just sit there on the pier and say, look at it, dummy, three ring circle. And they're all laughing, but I've heard some of those guys that just stranded outside, nobody go help them. Kamaiina Kids won't go out. They don't have nobody certified who will help. All they want is the money. But it's, it's real interesting to sit out there and watch, especially when tide, when the tide changing going out.
Thank you, Uncle Cliff. So I just wanna add to that real quick myself. With the Kamaiina rentals, I've seen Waihini dragging their kayaks across our reef and we're already having issues with our reef dying. So that is definitely something that needs to be addressed, if nothing else.
With the other kayak rentals, I watched them do it, because like, it's like right in front of my house. Like, there's a channel that they're told to come down and there's a private homeowner that is allowing the kayak rental owner to like pay him for them to come and dock at his little private pier. But sometimes they're, they're just not patient or like, they're like, oh, we can't find it. So they'll come across the reef and then you'll see them stop. And then they'll get up and they'll start walking and then see them tripping and drop the kayak. And it's, yeah, you know, like, I mean, I understand, like, you see local people fishing off the reef all the time, but there's a difference, right, in understanding. Like, they're fishing, they've always been doing it and they're, they're being more respectful to the situation as opposed to just, oh, I just need to get in or I'm gonna get charged the next $25. That's, it's all of these things, it's more so like a safety thing. After seeing the helicopters, that was, that was. You're at the pier the entire time.
Mahalo, Kyoni, okay. Ian, sorry, you wanted to add something for community concerns?
No, just supporting Kyoni's comments and kakoa all that.
Okay, mahalo.
Yeah.
Uncle Ken?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up again Senator Ava and John Rapun's apparent discrepancy on the acreage of Kani Oe, I mean Kahala Regional Park Makai. They're both right, okay? It turns out that the biggest lot is five acres. I just looked at the GIS after I saw this discrepancy because I did a lot of work in that area at one point. And so the biggest lot is five acres. But then John was also looking at the very close, it's a 2.9 acre lot, which is like the second largest. And then there's two others that are around two more acres. And then there's one that's underwater. So, yeah, they're both right, it's basically a 10 acres under different, and they're all city and county owned, okay? So it really doesn't matter that there are different lots. But it's all one big 10 acre set of properties owned by the city and county of Honolulu. And anything that can be done to improve that park land. If you want, I've got photos of what it used to be and drawings of what it could have been. I'd be glad to work with anybody in that area. And we did have a board member, five years ago maybe, that was working on this project, but he ended up not doing it for some reason. He got, kinda got stopped halfway through. But I think it was like a health issue or something, I can't remember what it was. Mahalo.
Thanks, Uncle Ken, Auntie Rocky, and then we're gonna move on in our agenda.
Yeah, that's another thing, like Pakipapali, it's also under the kuliana of the city. And the Waihini's business is coming out of, I think she said that she got okayed by the city for running her business there out of her home, Jared's home. But, you know, I think it's about time the city and the state start working together. There's too many laws, it's been, this is city fault, state fault, no, it can't be that way. You guys gotta get together. Another thing is the Kamaiina Kid you're talking about, right now, we're Maha'ala. As I speak, the AG's office is looking into that. Because, so right with the parks, like they do no care about the parks, but they're also breaking the Kani Oe Bay law. There's no more new businesses in Kani Oe Bay. So right now, it's being looked into, but again, the city and the state gotta work together to get the laws moving. We cannot keep going around the laws. Another thing is, the AG's office and Corporate Council, they seem to find ways to try and work when it comes to city and state being involved, they go around the law. They gotta start going with the law, with for the people and not go around the law to help the guys who's breaking the law. So that's, that's a problem we're having right now. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Auntie Rocky. Okay, moving on in our agenda to board business approval of the Wednesday, August 9th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. I'm just gonna go page by page and if there are no objections to the current minutes, I will move on. Page one. Page two. Page three. And page four, or a small portion of page four.
I hope that we accept minutes.
Do we need to do a roll call for this? Anti Rocky made the motion. Uncle John seconded. And we just ask for abstentions or we don't need to? Any abstentions? Great, meeting movement, meeting minutes approved from August. Mahalo. Okay, moving on to the discussion about the $1,000 of our budget to fund the little fire ant test kits. Does anybody have manao for this? Uncle John?
It's a noble gesture, but I don't think it's needed. Peanut, peanut butter is cheap, chopsticks are cheap. We just got to teach people.
Okay, uh, Chiaqua?
Yeah, so this thousand dollar funding, from my understanding, is a one-time funding opportunity that came through during COVID. And we're never going to get this again. NCO, can you answer that? That one-time thousand dollar funding that came to all neighborhood boards during COVID?
So as far as the thousand dollar funding, I believe it's more like a yearly thing going forward. So if you guys have like ways to use it, then I think that it's more I forget if it's based on the term or based on the year, I can double check.
Can we get confirmation on that? Because I was told it was a one-time, but I caught NCO. Thank you.
Okay, and then just something else for the board to consider with our budget. I was not present at last month's meeting because I was busy giving birth. But I know you folks discussed possibly moving our meeting location. And I just want you to be aware that there would be costs incurred of moving our meeting location. And I need to double check with Klay what the meeting cost for this room here at Key is as of current. But just something to think about. And if you guys want to make comment on that, we can. But until we have the full information from Key, maybe we hang on to that until next meeting. So on that note, then we'll just be meeting here and online until further notice, until we can kind of get those things settled. Logan, did you have something for us?
Yeah, just for any potential locations that you guys want to look at, it's definitely best to let the NCO know because we do have to, we do usually scout the locations and we'll we'll be the ones that end up incurring that cost that you're talking about. So.
Yeah, we talked to Lloyd.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I do have the cost sheet here of what some potential costs will look like for us at Kahaloo Elementary, if we were to do that. Senator Awaz's office was kind enough to go seek that for us where I believe. Okay, the principal will give Senator Awaz's office the cost tomorrow and then we can have that discussion again next meeting if you guys have anything else. And if you have other locations proposed for us to take to NCO, you can collect that information and bring it for discussion. So maybe we hold off on deciding what to do with our thousand dollar budget until we can discuss the LFA kits and the meeting location, the possibility of meeting location change at that time. Are we all in agreement? Does anybody have anything else to add to that? Uncle Cliff, go ahead.
Yeah, John, how's all the indicted albizis? Yeah, how does project coming along?
I'm going to say it's, it's moving along pretty well. In Wailea, we had a meeting. I think it was last week. We got the Pollo Mountain Watershed Partnership folks together, Paul Zwing, Kane and wife from the Agribusiness Development Corporation. Folks like Suku Kupao is one stepping in. A new, a new member of the staff for Pollo Mountain Watershed Partnership was there, Alana Mia Sherrill. And so we toured the up road and the down road as far as the gates. And she was using a GPS tracking device. So we're basically mapping where the hazard trees are. We're going to plan another trip, this time going from the watershed gate all the way up to where the pumps are. So we can do the same thing, map out where the hazard trees are, the ones that are threatening the roadway, communication lines, power lines and so on. It's coming along. Just a note on top of that. So we got little fire ants, we got coconut, nasturtis beetles, we got albiza, we got everything. And so all of, all of these different entities, Walvin invasive species committee, KDP, all of these folks are looking for more staffing and better facilities. So there's some discussion going on among a bunch of people about where we might, they might co-locate. So that there could be some savings so that if there's facilities, they're sharing a facility, for example. You know, the albiza folks, the feral big guys, the apples, everybody working together a lot more closely. So that's just something I'm looking at state, county lands that might be able to support facility like that for, for several facilities. So yeah, there's, there's stuff going on. My Elieli Ridge, that whole area around my Elieli Ridge, you look at the Kakoe Ivy side, the albizis are just coming up on that ridge. So we need a crew to be working on the whole of that ridge, going in and eliminating albiza, testing for fire ants and so on. Other folks like Heelei Povello, I mean, Kapua, sister and her husband, they've been working really hard in, you know, Huimano to delineate where fire ants are. Same time, they're also killing albizis. So that kind of collaboration, I think.
So on the albizis or?
Great. So for albizis, is this something that we're wanting to look at using our thousand dollars of funding for? Because if not, then we should defer this conversation.
No, because that, I was just looking, you know, how the state you know, when they cut the side of the road, like you look at the they, they cut all the albizis trees, but they don't, they don't kill them.
They don't kill them, yeah.
They don't want to wait for the soon to be dead.
Okay, Uncle Cliff, is this something that, is this something that we want to look at using the thousand dollars for? Because is that what? Of course, it's not going to cover it, but I'm wondering how this is pertinent to the agenda item.
Okay.
I think we should.
Is that something that we can discuss that, if that's something you want to use? Okay, next meeting, we'll put that on the agenda. Anti Rocky?
Can we bring this up on next month's agenda?
Yep, let's bring it up on next month's agenda. Thanks, Anti Rocky. Thanks, Anti Rocky. Ian?
Just to say that I don't care how much peanut butter and chopsticks we have, we should be very aggressively going after this little fire ant. We should support Joe and all the efforts of everyone. We should pass out as many kits as we can to everyone. And we should realize what an important subject this is. Even as we move to albiza, we're still talking about little fire ants. So let's use this opportunity for funding to use it what it's supposed to be for, which is to help us save our Koala Poco from these invasive species. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to add this to our agenda for, for next month's meeting, for us to make a decision on what we'll be using that funding for. So collect your notes and we'll have a more in-depth conversation on that. There's nothing else. I'm going to move on to sub-district reports. Sub-district one. Anything to report?
Nope, no changes in the mayor.
Okay, sub-district two, me, Uncle Rick and Uncle Cliff, anything else? Nothing new? I did want to report on that bend coming up of Wailehua Road when it turns into Lamaula Road. There's some brush that keeps growing up that my neighbors keep reporting that needs to be taken care of. It's in between the Wong's and the, that, that development, not development situation. I'm willing to go weed whack it myself at this point. Does anybody have bombs with that? Okay, because I don't know whose kuliana that is. Is that state kuliana or homeowner kuliana or?
Your baby's eighteen.
Wait till my baby's eighteen. Okay, well, if I go in there and weed whack it, is anybody going to have bombs with that? Because I'm afraid it's going to cause an accident.
It's also kids walking to and from school.
Yeah, so they cleaned the area once, but unfortunately, you know, not unfortunately, it rains a lot, so it grows up real quick.
And it's owned by fifty-seven dead people. So I, if they
Is that what it is, Uncle Ken? So that's, there's no jurisdiction there? That's private land owned by fifty-seven dead people? Is that confirmed?
That is the right of way.
Okay.
And it's owned by dead people. And if they complain, I want to see it.
Okay, all right. Okay, that was it for me. Sub-district, oh, Uncle Cliff? Okay, I might have to call, might have to call Uncle Rick for that one then. Excellent, excellent. All right, moving on. Sub-district three, anything to report?
Yeah, I'd like to report that. John was talking about the movies. The movies did help the city put up the signs, the blue signs. The movies and then they put the poles up for the city and county and put the signs up, the no trespassing sign. Which doesn't make any difference because they trespass anyway and they put the rubbish on the side of the road. But there's this one lady that comes almost every day and picks up the rubbish on two sides of the road. Her name is Mary. She does a good job, but, but before I go, I would like to congratulate our chairperson here on her new baby. Welcome back to chair and thank Jack for doing a good job in the last meeting and trying to take your place, but welcome back.
Thank you. So mahalo, Martha German, I believe is who goes and picks up the rubbish when on her daily walks. Mahalo Martha, who we've been trying to get on this board for some time. So anyways, Martha. Sub-district four. Anything to report? Five. Six.
Just the whole feral chicken situation going on in Hokuloa. A notice is being shared and the HOA of Hokuloa also encourages depopulation of feral chickens or not to feed them. It's, it's becoming a nuisance in, in the neighborhood. That's pretty much it. Mahalo.
So we need some more Kahaloo boys on bikes to go up to Hokuloa to take care of that. All right, moving on. Announcements. The next regular board meeting is Wednesday, October 11th, 2023 at seven here at Key Project and online via WebEx. Any other announcements? Amazing, we are adjourned at nine twenty-one.
Nice job. Nice job. Mahalo.
Thanks, Uncle Ken.
Thank you, Chair. Congratulations.
There's some chocolate cake on the table. If anybody wants chocolate cake.
Oh, now that's unfair. I had ice cream.
Well, I can have a good night.
Mahalo you folks.
See ya.